I'd like to call the order of the Charter Township of Oxford Plan and Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, January 11th, 2018. Would you please rise and pay your respects to the chairman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Is the roll noted with an excused absence for Mr. Spiz and Mr. Sharp?
Nahi.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the Charter Township of Oxford Regular Plan and Commission Meeting Agenda for Thursday, January 11th, 2018. I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the Regular Plan and Commission Meeting Minutes for December 14th, 2017. I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Yeah?
Just, I don't know if anybody would consider adding on the wedding chapel, just because it may be important if they go in front of the board. I don't know if they have yet, but the planning commission identified that there could be a zoning discrepancy on the parcel. And that, you know, the planning commission said that they may want to discuss this issue with county board, just so that if it does come up, it shows that it is an action that we did. You know, if I'm remembering it right, they couldn't quite tell what the zoning was on the piece I had.
Mr. Chair.
Different zoning and that that could be an issue that come up and that may lead to a renovation. We just, you know, haven't discussed that with county board if that is what was found.
Last night's Township Board, I did, at the request of this Planning Commission, take that to the township and it was on the agenda last night. And we are being redirected to visit that with some instructions that no charge to the applicant.
Okay, good. If it's too far, it's fine.
It's already moving forward.
I just thought if they needed that, that could be something there, but it's fine.
Okay. Anything else? Those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Public comments for items that are not on our agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, commissioners' comments. Mr. Curtis?
You know, the only comment I've got is we, we're going back and forth with the Legacy Center regarding the liquor license that's being applied for. Right now, they're being stopped work order is on the restaurant through the Oakland County Health Department. There's a convoluted approval process for the Legacy Center, some being done by the zoning administrator, some being done by the ZBA, some being done by the Township Board, some being done by the Planning Commission. And right now, there's a big issue. For example, they've already painted martini glasses on the building and beer glasses on the building, and that's in direct violation of what they said, that we're gonna have them or signs or murals, now they're painting them. There is a whole plethora of items that need to be addressed with the Legacy Center, and I believe they may have to come back in here for a revised site plan. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. That's all the comments I have.
Mr. Noel?
I also want to add on to that, I was at meetings this week and every meeting Legacy came up. One way, at ZBA, at the trustee meeting last night, so Legacy is on the tip of people's thoughts.
Well, I can wait until later, but Matt Lonestater did write some correspondence
back and forth just recently as of today in regards to his feelings that they should have to come back to the Planning Commission, because they did not speak of all the things that they were gonna utilize the space for inside. And he feels that the one area, the theater area in particular, really increases the amount of parking that would be required for that based on the loads. And patio area that was never really approved on the outside, which are trying to provide for, I guess, drinking or partying or whatever. And we should probably let Matt speak to what his comments were maybe a little later this evening during his time. I would think that would be appropriate first, but here, here.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
From the ZBA perspective, yeah, the Legacy Center has posed quite a challenge. If I could from liaison perspective say that if we could prioritize, looking at our sign ordinance, we know that there's component source sign ordinance that don't meet the law because of the department ruling. And it really is something that could bite us, but we could do a real quick look over on that. His content, it can't be regulated. But we can specify what content we actually can regulate, like for example, those pics and images and the use of American flags and things like that. But we also didn't really have a provision in our ordinance for handling a building like that. And we're gonna see more of that. That really is what, you know, is part of the problem. So I'm just saying if we wanna, you know, consider that we have to redo our sign ordinance. That's not an option. I mean, we do have to do it, but we could do it in a couple different phases by making that kind of situation what we do in a multi-family large building like that. And kind of simplify the ordinance per district, which could be a lot harder thing to do. Kind of put in a great format. It's gonna be a problem. And I know some of the things that were said, you know, this is what it's gonna look like. It's not looking like we had anticipated either. Hopefully it'll be worked out, but fixing the ordinance may be a good way to bring it back into a more manageable piece.
Yeah, I think it would be good for Matt to touch on that at the end of the, end of the night, and then we can have a little bit more discussion about it. Because I've gotten some complaints from people out in the community about what's happening there, and we really need to tidy that up, I think. At least get a plan of action. Okay. Item number eight, public hearing. The public, the purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed rezoning of, I'm sorry. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance 678 regarding modifying section 1.3 enabling authority to adopt by reference to Michigan's Zoning Enabling Act, Public Act 110 of 2006, MCL 125.3101, as amended at this time or as may be amended in the future. Modifying section 3.7, the schedule of district regulations to reduce required side yard setback for non-conforming lots within the R1 and R1A zoning district. Modifying section 8.8, parking and storage of commercial recreational vehicles to clarify the conditions for allowing RV storage and repair within residential zoning districts. Modifying section 7.5, standards for landscape materials to reference established lists of invasive and diseased species. And modifying section 3.5, site condominiums to incorporate street tree requirements. I'm assuming you're the petitioner on this one? Yes, but I'm going to defer to Matt.
Sure.
As the petitioner.
Okay.
So if you wanna, yeah.
I'll just briefly explain the purpose of these amendments. We have five total amendments. Most of these you have, we have seen before at the Planning Commission level. Starting with section 1.3, this was proposed by the township attorney, and all this does is reference the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Zoning ordinances in the state are required by law to basically adopt by reference the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, so this just brings that into our ordinance. This was, again, recommended by the attorney. Moving on to section 3.7, the schedule of district regulations. We have seen this before. The purpose of this amendment is to, there are actually two amendments. The big one is to allow for a side yard setback reduction for existing lots with non-conforming lot widths in the R1 and R1A district. If you recall, a couple, it was more than a couple months ago, but last year, we reviewed an analysis that showed a bunch of lots within the Maloney area, Brad Dewey neighborhood that had non-conforming lot widths, but yet were still required to meet the 10-foot side yard setback or seven and a half side yard setbacks of the district. So the ZBA has been receiving a lot of applicant, applications to reduce that because they just, the applicants and the property owners can't get it to work. So the purpose of this amendment is to allow some flexibility reducing that side yard setback to five feet for properties with non-conforming lot widths. However, the sum of the two side yards does have to be 12 and a half feet. And then the other minor change here is just rewording the residential mechanical equipment section. The current ordinance says in number four here that air conditioning equipment has to be five feet from the side or rear yard. We just expanded that to include all residential mechanical equipment like generators, just to make sure that everything's included. Okay, moving on. RV parking, this is section 8.8. This was another text amendment proposed by the attorney. We have looked at this before. The purpose of this ordinance is to require, require a single-family residence to be on a property as a condition of storing RV. So, and that's accepting properties within the SF3 and Ag zoning districts with at least 10 acres. So we have two sections. There's storing RVs temporarily in that first part, it has to be residential dwelling on the property. And then the second part is storing RVs for a longer-term basis for lengths exceeding 14 days. Again, it has to be, there has to be a property on the dwelling unless you're in the SF3 or Ag and have 10 or more acres. One thing I do want to note is that, this is oversight, my part at the very end in 3E, the attorney added language saying that recreational vehicles can be used for living, sleeping, or housekeeping purposes. If you're within the SF3 or Ag and you have 10 or more acres, not to exceed a certain number of days, it's blank. So I would recommend 30 days, just one month, but that's up to you. We need to insert some number if we want to bore allowance to the township board, but that's really the only part of this that I left, or I typed and oversigned on. So we can bring that up during discussion. The last section is related to street trees, section 13.5. This amendment adds street tree requirements for site condominiums. If you recall, we have, the current ordinance has street tree requirements for multifamily projects and PUDs, but not for straight site condos. So this text amendment just incorporates basically the same standard that we use for PUDs into the site condo section. And then section 7.5, we just reference existing documents maintained by the MDQ, MDNR, Department of Agriculture, DARD, allowing the township to utilize these documents with regards to exotic species or invasive species. That sums up.
Who determines the species?
Much, just the State Department.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, the township, we can maintain ours, but they're, they change all the time. This gives us a chance to defer the professionals and defer to the state as they update their lists.
So it's more in relationship to the list?
Yeah, I mean, it's all the list. It's, we want to make sure that we're not, we have the capacity to enforce removal of invasive species, but this makes sure that we don't have to keep updating our own ordinance. We can just defer to the state records.
It automatically updates them then, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to open the public hearing. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for discussion on the approved, let me back up. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for discussion of the draft zoning ordinance text review at 7:16.
I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Is there any discussion on the motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Is anyone in the public wishing to speak?
It's his turn.
Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to close.
Nothing to say, Scott? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:17.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, comments from, anyone, any commissioners? Or any questions?
Going back to the ordinance, we were saying about 30 days for recreational vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
Now, would that ordinance override HOA requirements?
No, well, where the township is, we're not responsible for enforcing HOA, but this would set a township-wide standard. HOA requirements, this is, would ensure that HOA standards can't exceed 30 days, basically just sets a minimum.
So if the HOA standard is 14, it can remain at 14?
Right. If the HOA is 14, yeah, that it's the, it's the association's job to enforce that. If the HOA sets it at 35 days, that would be in violation with the township ordinances and we could then enforce it.
Yeah, that I understand, but as far as going underneath it.
They can, yeah, they can be more restrictive.
They can be more restrictive, okay.
I was asking the same way. So you're saying 30 days total in any year period?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple ways we can, we could work with this language. I've seen example ordinances that had, you could have two consecutive, or sorry, two periods throughout the year of 14 consecutive days. So you could have 14 days and move it, then come back a month later and have 14 days. A 30 days annually means no more than 30 total days. You can spread it out however you want it, but if we drive by it and we see that you've been living there for two months, we can enforce it. But that, I mean, that number was something that, example ordinance that I saw, we can, we can play around with the number if you want. I just noticed I was going through it today, that the number was on blank.
I, I had cut that right there. I thought, well, maybe that was because it was up for us.
Yeah, I think that's why they left it blank.
Wait, you're not gonna let them stay year-round on most properties?
No.
That wouldn't do.
So what is the intent of the 30 days?
It's to just keep people from building, to just take out a trailer and put it on property and live there.
For six months.
Yeah. It's really just to keep that from being the alternate to a house, being built on the Ag and that. My question was also, why it was just SF3 pulled out? I mean, when I looked at their district regulations, SF1, 2, and 3 all have the, they say the same thing, except for the acre size, all of the other land uses and special uses are exactly the same. That's something I, I wanted to discuss actually.
And I think the acreage was really the only thing.
The acreage is the only difference.
Yeah, and I think that's why the attorneys chose the SF3, the schedule of district regulations. SF3 is the 10-acre minimum. So because one of the qualifications that, is that you have to have 10 or more acres, if you're an SF2, the minimum is five. So a majority or a lot of properties in the SF2 wouldn't even qualify for this kind of standard. So Ag and SF3 are the only districts in the schedule of regulations that require at least 10 acres for a new lot.
All right, we have a lot of SF2 and even 1 that are on larger acres. Would it be thrown this out there to say, an SF property is over 10 acres or larger as an exemption? Because it's really size of the property.
That's what it's.
We don't have, when you look at our SF, when you actually look at the zoning map, the overlays of the SF locally don't match the size of the lots at all. I can see it saying, okay, if you're 10 acres or more, we'd allow you to, you know, camp on your property for a certain period of time. You have your 10 acres to work with, and maybe your neighbors do too, and you have some hunting areas and things like that. If it's five acres or less, I can see it not. You could even have a deficient size, which we have a lot too, of deficient SF that aren't 10 acres and SF2 acres.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it SF3, because thinking this way, we have properties that are zoned SF2, which are 100 acres. But if somebody splits off three and a half acre, three acres and makes it the SF2 split, and they've already had this on, and we could end up with, well, I'm grandfather, and I'm this, I'm that, my neighbors all have 10 acres and 100 acres. It just, SF3 clearly states 10 acres.
You've seen a lot of stuff where the reason that you're putting in ordinance is to protect a certain thing, you'd have to be kind of consistent in its application, meaning the whole point of making it SF3 is 10 acres, and people can show in these other districts that they're all 10 acres or bigger.
We wouldn't allow it.
You're kind of double standard. Why is it okay on property zoned SF3 acres, but on SF2 acres, when everything else in that zoning district are the same?
I would debate the double standard, because SF2 is two and a half acres and over two and a half acres. So SF3 clearly states over 10 acres.
10 or more.
10 or more. So you're specifically calling out 10 acres with SF3. SF2 can have 100 acres, but we don't want temporary living on SF2 for a period of time. A couple years, three years go out, and then the land gets split, one lot goes off, then we set ourselves up for confrontation.
If you could still split, if it's SF3.
You can't go below 10 acres.
We don't, we don't, but if it's five acre piece and it's 10 acre piece and they split it, then it wouldn't be SF3 either.
Right, right. So saying it's SF3 would take out the confrontation, only allowing it in an SF3 or Ag, which is larger pieces of property, even though I own a SF2, which is greater than two and a half acres, I wouldn't want to be coming here saying, will you allow it on a 10 acre piece? I have 11 and it's zoned SF2, but I'm gonna split it off.
I think it'd be helpful if we actually get the zoning map. Obviously, you can visualize.
I don't, I think we just.
I mean, this came from the township attorney, so it had to come for a reason, and he had to have some, well, I mean, what stimulated this, this change in the first place, I mean?
It's because we had people that wanted to start motorhomes.
Store motor.
I think the reason that.
So we had to add, our idea was to.
On vacant land.
Our idea was to add, to allow it on acreage properties. It was our idea to put that in there.
So if people wanted to store vacant, they want to take vacant property and store recreational vehicles on it?
Yeah.
So this is just to say, if you have 10 acres, you can, or more.
Right, we were just gonna say blanket, no, you can't do it, and then there was discussion of, well, in larger properties, maybe we should allow it. So that's brought in the Ag, and then it brought in a part of the SF3. And so I'm just saying, I don't know that we've ever really had the chance to really discuss.
I'm okay with just 10 acres and above.
I'm okay with SF3.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Because then the properties are large enough to say, otherwise, he's right, you could still have a 20-acre SF2 or something, but it wouldn't be permissible, but that's, you know that going in, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I touch upon, I think Jack made a really good point, which is the grandfather issue. This ensures, the SF3 ensures that the property will remain 10 acres or larger. And I think the attorney picked the 10 acres to ensure that there's enough room on the property that you can keep it away, keep it away from neighbors.
Yeah.
And when you start getting into SF2 in the denser districts, you have more of an opportunity for neighbors to see you, because there's just more people living around you. So I think that was the reasoning for the attorney picking 10 acres and SF3 as the only district. And because this is a zoning ordinance, the grandfather, the non-conforming use issue can come into play. If it was a general ordinance, the township could enforce it if it got under 10 acres, but we're dealing with a zoning ordinance, and you're dealing with non-conforming uses that are allowed to continue. So I would recommend keeping it as the SF3, just for those, those issues, the non-conforming and the, the neighbor issue, having enough property to work with.
Also, just quickly look at the zoning, the zoning map.
You can, well, I have one here if you want to pass it down. I don't have a big one on me, unfortunately, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just.
Where these areas are. Well, why do you do that? What about the number of days? Is 30 straw full?
I say 30. That's total per year, right?
Yes. 30 days annually limited.
I know, that's.
Well, I think the point is.
You should look for some complaints in the court starts kicking.
When the guy's in his fourth week.
Right.
I mean, I don't think anyone's gonna track somebody towards it.
It'll, it'll be from a complaint, and then it would be logged into a timetable, rather than they have a reference point to go from. Again, it allows you to maintain the ordinance by having ordinance enforcement.
Does it pertaining to the same vehicle? Hope you have two different recreational vehicles.
Well, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna find that, that when you look at recreational vehicle, it means if you had one there for 14 days, you brought a different kind in for another 14.
Still had a vehicle.
You're 28 days.
Right.
So you're gonna have two days left, and it wouldn't matter if you brought another one in for two days, then you're done, because it doesn't matter what the vehicle is. If you're gonna bring in two on the property, is that what you're trying to say, at the same time?
Yeah, either two at the same time, or if you bring one in at the camper, and then you bring a.
30 for one day.
And you bring a.
I would believe you could bring in two or three at a time, if you had that many. And you're, but you're a principal residence on the property, so you know, you have to have, you know, you're gonna be a person that lives there, right?
Not if it's 10 acres.
Well, no, wait a minute, that's when it's 10 acres and larger. So I'm okay with that 10 acres and larger part of it. I guess I'd like to keep it at SF3 and/or Ag, and then I'm okay with it. But like, you gotta have some way to start with your enforcement agency, and that gives you a starting point of the timetable. I think 30 days is good. That's my opinion.
Do you guys go with 30 days if that gets put in there?
Yeah.
Anyone else really opposed to 30 days? Matt, we'd probably like to include 30 days in that then.
Okay, I just recommend that whoever makes the motion doesn't include that as a condition of the motion.
Right. Any other comments in reference to any, excuse me, in reference to any of the other sections?
No, other than the fact that I think it's probably good that we did something with the side yard setback on non-existing, or excuse me, existing non-conforming lots, because it should relieve some of the cases that have to go to the zoning board of appeals, and then plus give people, citizens, the petition to develop something on their property, a little better way to do it. I think it's good.
It's gonna be a great help.
Yeah.
I think we're still gonna see the cases.
I think that's, that's a good, good amendment, the ordinance.
We'll still see them, but they won't be sounding as severe. It's what they are now.
Okay, so I think that, I think that's pretty good. I like it anytime we renew something too, that helps, like when the state makes a change. I like it anytime we renew something too that helps, like when the state makes a change. We talked earlier about an automatic review and update your ordinance. I like when you have any ordinance does that.
Any other comments? Okay, do you know?
Based upon the draft zoning ordinance text dated December 18th, 2017, received from the township planner and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, I move that the planning commission recommended the township board approval of the following zoning ordinance text amendments. Number one, amendments to section 1.3 enabling authority to adopt by reference the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, public act 110 of 2006 is amended. Number two, amendments to section 3.7, schedule of district regulations to reduce the required side yard setbacks for nonconforming lots within the R1 and R1A zoning districts. Number three, amendments to zoning, excuse me, amendments to section 8.8, parking and storage of commercial and recreational vehicles to clarify conditions for allowing RV storage and repair within residential zoning districts with the addition of limited to 30 days annually. Number four, amendments to section 7.5, standards for landscape materials to be referenced, to reference established list of invasive and diseased species. And number five, amendments to section 13.5, site condominiums to incorporate statutory requirements. End of motion.
I'll second the motion. Then moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I forget my place sometimes.
There you go, Ed.
Uh, Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Mr. Hunwick.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan Meyer.
Yeah.
That's Mr. Dun.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, we move on to item nine, unfinished business, which there is none, so we'll move to number 10. New business, election of officers.
I'd like to nominate Mike Young for chairperson.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been, is there any other nominations? Seeing none? I will accept it for 2018. As there were no other nominations, I'll serve as the chairman for 2018 by unanimous. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Yes, consent. For vice chairman, I'd like to nominate Tom Berger for vice chairperson. I'll second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none? We'll see Mr. Berger will serve as the vice chairman for 2018 by unanimous consent. For secretary, I'd like to nominate John Noel. See him second that one.
I'll second that one. I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations or questions?
Oh, we don't have a year, right?
Oh, not a year.
I'll rescind my motion. Guess who's gonna get it.
I didn't know that. Seems like it's been there a while.
I didn't know it applied to just the.
Does it?
Chair, I know it applies to the chair, the vice chair, I would assume because it'd be seconded by this.
Okay.
Point was that the red holder would be.
Nominations for secretary?
Ed Hunwick, I would nominate for secretary. I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Seeing none? Commissioner Hunwick will serve as the secretary for 2018 by unanimous consent. Next item up, we have committee assignments. We've got three really committees that we need to fill or concerns we need to fill. We have the EDS, Economic Development Committee of the PC, the Ordinance Review Committee of the PC, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. I would like to see Callie on the ZBA as our representative for the PC. On the Ordinance Review Committee, John Noel, Ed Hunwick, and Tom Berger. And on Economic Development, Mike Spis, Jack Curtis, and myself. Do we have to second that or? Nope, I think it's a committee assignment.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to number 11, communications and/or committee reports. Economic Development Committee.
We did not meet in January. Nothing to report.
Okay, do you think there may be one in February? Possibly in February?
Yes, we will have a February meeting.
Okay. Ordinance Review Committee?
We would, we would meet the second Thursday, so we have the next, the next meeting in January. So that's been posted.
Okay. Planner and engineer reports. Mr. Sharp's not here, so Matt, do you want to go over a little bit about the legacy?
Sure, yeah, I'll go over the legacy. This has been a difficult project, to say the least. I think that we need to have some, some established procedure for dealing with new uses that come in with this. In the past, when the owners have come into the zoning permit table and they come and say, we have, you know, we have a new use, I'll typically go over the use and see whether it constitutes a substantial change. As our ordinance says that planning commission action is needed when there's a substantial change of use. What they had said in the past was that we're replacing one use with another and I would, I would consider it a similar use. So we were doing it administratively. Well, now what is happening is that they're changing the use and then adding things on to it. You know, with the bar, for example, it was, the cafe was in the original plan, but now they've added a bar section and now they've added an outdoor patio bar, which was never approved. And I understand that there's a live music venue, which was, was never approved, at least from what I can tell, never approved in the original site plan or the amended site plan. And I would consider that a substantial addition of use, which would require parking analysis as well as approval by the open county health department. So I think whether, if you want to meet, set up a meeting from the township and maybe any applicant get them involved too, to just set up an outline of what needs to go to the PC, what needs to, what can be done administratively? And what uses that they have now that they want to come in, how we would, how we were gonna deal with those uses, whether it be administratively or through the planning commission. That way both of us know the appropriate procedures. But it's just, it's been difficult to try to deal with the changes that they're making. Because I just, I don't know if they've been 100% honest or if they just didn't know what they wanted when they first came in. I'm not gonna speak for them, but I don't think we should allow things to be administratively done anymore that are obviously big changes.
I would agree.
How do we categorize the entity that's there, the way they're operating it?
In terms of the type of use?
Yeah, I mean.
Consider it a entertainment venue with.
The whole thing.
It's an A3 use group.
In terms of the building?
In terms of how you could classify it from a code point of view. So under A3 assembly, you can have all kinds of occupant loads with mixed use.
Yeah, it's a multi-use commercial.
But I don't think anybody knew originally when they went to the township. I'll back up. When they first applied to the health division with their plans, they were showing 300 people for the bar restaurant area and 650 people for the theater area, which was 950 people. And I said, wait a minute, how can that place on a private septic system and with its own well accommodate the kinds of people they're trying to put in there now and what they're trying to do? Then the health division got ahold of it all through their planning review process, which is, you know, Josh Nelson. And we talked back and forth and then the health division said, wait, we gotta stop and research what's really going on. So there's a lot to it. I don't want to go into all that detail tonight, I don't think. We had a meeting today at 1 o'clock with Mr. Mills, their architect, their mechanical contractor, two of the people that work for Mr. Mills under his supervision, Bob Gerst, the mechanical and plumbing inspector for the township, Pat Payne, the electrical inspector from the township, myself, Mr. Dunn, and also Laurie, who works in the building department, was present with concerns that we all have had and how they've been trying to get things done in the building when they don't even have all the proper permits in place yet. So we're not doing any inspections. We won't do any files. We won't do anything in regards to the building right now per se with what they want done inside until we get the proper documents in place and the proper permits in place. And then we are moving forward in that direction. But they have since decreased their occupant loads to 190 now from 300 in the bar restaurant area. And they decreased the theater area from 650 to 500. And basically, the only reason they did it is because of the amount of how the calculations work with seven and a half gallons per person, you know, with how they do usage. And they don't want to go over 10,000 gallons of usage because they were calculating more than 10,000 gallons of usage in there a day. And then they have to go to the DEQ for another permit on behalf of all that, once you go past certain, certain amount of gallons of water. So they haven't resolved their issues with the health department yet. They haven't resolved the issues with the building department yet. Signage, signage, in my opinion, when they start that stuff up, then we should be putting a stop on all that signage. They gotta be way over in square footage, in my opinion. That should be an ordinance enforcement thing through the township, but this department is ordinance enforcement. We don't police for the township. So that should be coming from a different point. And they already did put stuff up there, like everybody said, which is trying to say what they're trying to do inside. So we have a lot of wrinkles that need to be ironed out and none of them are. Plus, they don't have a liquor license yet and Jack knows all about the whole story. So we have to wait now and see what they're going to present to us next week, which we're supposed to find. We don't work on Monday. Monday's a holiday in the township, so they can't put anything together. Maybe or bring anything in prior to Tuesday of next week, if they bring it at all. And then we have to go from there. But we're not moving forward with anything right now without the proper documents that we had to go by. And I think if we get the proper documents, I think Matt made some good comments. When you have, even though they're allowed in a C2 district, they're in a C2 district. We rezoned it to make it compatible with what they were trying to do there in the first place because it was a factory before. So, you know, I wasn't, I just don't feel like there's enough parking myself. I mean, I have to deal with handicap parking. I have to deal with all the other stuff that's gotta go on there and accessibility rules and guidelines. So I think somehow it should be reviewed.
It seems to me though that when their site plan was approved, they said they were gonna have X number of uses or X number of square footage. Do we come up with the number of parking spots and?
Based on what they gave you?
Yeah, but I don't believe that any of those numbers you just described were included in there.
Oh, they weren't.
Since the time where some of us were asking for an asphalt and you didn't get put in.
I was not, see, when that, when that site plan originally got approved, I wasn't at the meeting. So I don't know what was asked for. And then I came back and said, what the heck did they do? Because look at what they're gonna put inside this place.
We not bad.
So when I look at, if, what I had to deal with, we have to go to voice activation alarm systems in there because we're way over 1,000 people now. So we are at 2,000 occupants within that building, 2,000. So we had to, the alarm systems all have to change. We have to go to all different kinds of, different components inside, even for the trampoline area and the rest. I mean, it's all gotta be remodified. There's a lot of stuff going on. So I didn't know they were gonna bring in numbers like that until they were presented to me. And then I'm a code guy, so I'm looking at everything from a code point of view. And whether it was approved by the planning commission or administratively approved through the planning and zoning component of it, normally when I get plans, I'm assuming that's already been done. So I, I'm not thinking of it about the planning and zoning part. Then Matt brought up some good issues today, so then I'm reading just some of your emails, some of the emails, and I'm going, holy smoke, so now we're kind of backtracking. I don't even, can we do that?
Well, we, just thinking, I think the hard part about this is because it's such a unique building. So to try to put it in perspective, I try to imagine it as like a strip mall.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying.
So it's a strip mall and you have a use, say, one store goes out of business and another type of, maybe an office comes in. It depends on the new use that's coming in. So when they have one recreational, we have a category called indoor recreational. So when they replace one indoor recreational with another, as long as the square footage matches and the parking is there, that's what I'm looking after zoning. Now, I think there should be more to look at, but that's what the zoning ordinance says I should be looking at. But when you start adding new square footage, which wasn't approved originally, whether it's the restaurant use or adding a new theater use, then I think the planning commission needs to be involved. You have a question?
I agree.
Boy, a couple of questions. Is there parking in the road right of way now? I mean, that plot, isn't that on road right of way?
Yeah, that's M dot.
So there's parking within the road right of way. Was that ever put in the plan?
I know that it was a condition of it, of the last site plan of rules that we have to have M dot approval of it. And I think they, well, they did.
Well, I mean, I went through there and the drain just goes right from the building, right across, it's parked. The water is sort of streaming across there and there isn't hatching. And the cars are interfering with people walking, there's no tag walk along the front and stuff. And I just can't, for me, I comprehend how that could be all a lot or it just doesn't. And it's in the road right of way, like, you have your parking area in the front. There's just some, the area, like, concern. And I don't know at what point we look at it, it seems like the whole file should just be pulled and we should have a discussion on it. Where it's just brought up, have we switched away whatever we have in our building?
Well, I mean, the township did approve a site plan. So they should adhere to what has been approved.
From the site?
From the site plan. I always said it has to be in accordance with the site plan that's been approved.
The only portion of that plan was approved. Like, we only saw a portion of it.
Well, we said, there was the original plan and then they came back for the parking lot addition.
Yeah.
So the parking lot addition is now the adopted site plan.
Technically, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I look at it like, that's the only thing I got to go by.
Do the township sewers run along there? Well, the sewers.
Township sewers are at McDonald's.
The sewer is about 100 feet from their lot line at McDonald's.
Yeah, it's at McDonald's.
You can't force them to tap in?
No, you gotta, the building itself would have to be within 200 feet of a utility location. But you're talking Michigan law. No.
Oh, the building?
I'm talking about Michigan law.
The property is.
If you have, if you're within 200 feet of a utility connection, you have to hook up by law within 18 months of that being a building.
Yeah, that's.
But that's a whole different rule. They're a lot further away than that because I already checked with Jim Sharp on that issue. So they're not, they can't be forced to hook up. They can't.
The only thing is the property.
Oh, not the property, the building. So I already checked, but they gotta figure out what they're gonna do with their whole sanitary sewer situation anyway.
I thought it was additional provisions if there was water bodies. That, that actually goes into a different status if there's a water body that that lot feeds around?
Well, if the DEQ has to become involved, then the health division says to the DEQ, once it goes over a certain number of gallons.
Yeah, we have a public.
Then it goes to the DEQ. They're trying to avoid that right now by decreasing the occupant load so they won't go over the 10,000 gallon usage.
Will the DEQ force them out though?
No.
Well, they can't.
You're talking Michigan laws that are regulating utilities. And if they had to hook up, they'd have to be within 200 feet. And they're not yet. If somebody were to expand the sewer and go right down in front of their property, then they probably would be. That's not gonna happen right now through the township. I already asked Mr. Dunn about that. So, and I asked Jim Sharp about it too, but, and I was more concerned about really whether or not we could get them to tap into the water system for the type of water they need. They, they have to have their own arsenic removal system in there. They have to have all kinds of things that have to be then maintained. And my problem is when you have systems with public use, who maintains? Who goes in and makes the checks on all that stuff to make sure you're providing the proper potable water necessary for people to utilize? So I wish they were on our system, but we can't force them to do that either because they have their own wells. And as long as their wells can comply, the health, the health department regulates wells within our. And, uh, as long as their wells can comply, the hea-, the health department regulates wells within our county, so.
Does it regulate, does it know that it should be regulating this well? Because they would regulate-
Does who know?
The, the health department for the water, because if they would-
Sure they know, they're already, they've already written letters to them about it.
When you pull the permit, I know they do, but with the amount of use now, it now goes into a higher class.
Oh, they're already, they're already on about the use, and they're already telling them what they're gonna have to do if they go over certain usage, so.
There, there's gotta be a meeting. There's a lot of outstanding things that are happening.
But we're not the health division, we can't step in that arena. I have to just see what the health division does, and so my question today at the meeting I was in was, do you have approval from the health division? Because I don't want to beat my head up against the wall and work with something that may not even get there in the first place. So I said, until you really have approval from the health division, and I know it, I'm not gonna proceed forward. And I also want documents in accordance with what was actually built there, because I have an approved set of plans that I approved, I did the review on, and they did not build to those plans. So I said, those plans now have to be amended to exactly what's in there, and everything has to be re-reviewed by us and then permitted accordingly. And they haven't done that yet. We don't have a new set of documents in front of us. They have not been presented.
Right, you're going back to what Matt said, yeah, I don't think administratively, uh, some of these changes should-
I think the, I think that Matt's trying to say the, the concept of the size and capacity of what they're trying to utilize the space for should have been done back through the planning commission, they're not done administratively.
And that's what, that's where we're going with the committee, with you, Matt, and the trustees. So, from here, it's all a building department issue. We're not issuing, uh, a liquor license until then.
Yeah, right.
And that's where it ends, right there. Now he owns up. He's gone to the ZBA, he thinks he heard something. He comes to the planning commission, he thinks he heard something. He says he went to the health department, he didn't. All this is coming out.
Right.
It's all coming out, and that's-
Well, I was actually told, when I walked through the building last week, I took a, a walk there just on my own, went inside, I was met instantly, you know, they showed up like flies on stink to me. And, uh, they, they started telling, oh yes, we've got approval for this, and we have approval for that. I said, really? I said, then provide the documentation that tells me that, because it's always inviting from the health division. Uh, well, we, we, we're working on it. I said, well, working on it doesn't mean you have approval. So I called the health division myself, I mean, I have a right to do that. So they don't have approval. And, and, uh, and they might have to go through quite a bit to get approval. I don't know what they're gonna do yet.
Well, let them worry.
They, actually, the ball is in their court. We told them today, and Mr. Dunn even told them today, this is in, this responsibility is upon you now to get this right. So, I mean, it's not, and I, I've been trying to tell people for a while now, and finally we had the meeting. I brought the meeting together. So, you know, I wanted Mr. Dunn involved, but I went to Mr. Dunn yesterday and said, we need a meeting. Uh, he wasn't available the day before, so that's the quickest I could get it, and to get everybody on board, I needed their architect in the meeting. So he was there today.
So you're-
Oh, we've stipulated way more than what I talked about.
You're comfortable there? Comfortable, well, with what you said, yeah, with comfortable with the, what's there, you know, the legacy sound.
I feel like if they really build that space out and bring in that occupant load, there's no way there's enough parking.
Yeah, and that's why I think there needs to, I would like to see it back at the finding commission level, where we just get it out, what, what is there now? And make stipulations for changes, you know, I don't think that they should have to come back if they want to change one of the smaller units from an ice cream shop to a-
Olive Hill.
Yeah, or a sandwich. But if they're changing, uh, the, the pool area to another go-kart, then yes, they should, they should have to come back and re, reprove that their parking is right and that their, kind of, the health department is okay with it. So I think we need to set criteria for administrative or finding commission review.
I totally agree.
The, um, parking lot, uh, to the northwest, that component, that one was the one that we're talking about where the site plan is approved. Has there been a permit pulled for that?
Yeah, well, they, they-
Yeah, there was.
Yeah.
There was, and they actually did work there. They've alr-, already got pavement in and they've got curb-
I haven't got, I haven't got a final zoning inspection up yet.
But, to be honest with you, when I go around to the very far north end and go around to the west side, with just the vehicles that are there, with construction activity and stuff going on inside, well, I have a hard time finding a place to park.
I went on that IC day, trying to get up that little, going back up-
I went up there on IC day. But I'm just telling you right now, it's, I'm, I'm disappointed we don't have enough parking. I mean, for the use that's being, uh, well, I guess-
As is.
Yeah.
So anything from that, that point moving forward?
Yeah, I would, I would want to support, we allow anything else, or, first of all, the count, the health department has to prove it. So I think they have to do anything before we can, but before we let anything else happen, we need to have some precedent and standards to go by.
I think you're gonna have to tell other people within the township, because, well, Jack and me, right?
No, they're urgent, they know.
Because I think it's, it's a little above us, we're not the policing agency. So this has to go beyond us, we're not the policing agency for the township.
His application was pulled last night.
Our comments are all, our comments have been heard, that were, someone else has to be, uh, be acting component.
Christian pulled his application for a license last night.
Okay.
Bill told him, look-
He wasn't ready.
You're not ready.
Okay, well, that makes-
That's where we're at.
That makes more sense than that, okay. All right.
With that then, I think I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-six.